Before we call the meeting to order, I've asked Commissioner Hardy to lead us in prayer. Commissioner Bone for the pledge.
Join me in prayer if you will. Father Lord, we just come to you tonight. We thank you for this night. Father, we just pray God to give us the wisdom and knowledge to do the business of the county, God, and we do it respectfully, man, or Lord, and we just pray, God, that you'll... We thank you for our county and what you're doing in our county, God, and the things you have done in our future of our generation. We just thank you for all that you do, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, a call to meeting to order for October twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. Let the record show that Commissioner Mims is absent, although the commissioners are present. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. Again, if you hadn't silenced your phones or put them on airplane mode, please do so. Need a motion to approve the agenda?
Will we approve the agenda?
Second. Got a motion, Commissioner Williams, second, Commissioner Bone. Any additions or deletions?
Under the consent agenda, change the commission office, A. I forgot when we were talking about the banks. The one with the highest was First Bank of Alabama, and we needed to note that in the minutes. And also change under the commission office from the commissioner assigned to the department from the chair or vice chair doing the evaluations. Under road department, under consent, the approval to purchase two F-150 pickup trucks from Stivers Ford utilizing the state bid list. Under regular agenda, the road department amendments for reclassification wages. And also under Commissioner Hardy, resolution to appoint Alan Kaiten to sheriff's merit board.
Okay.
Reappoints.
Any discussion?
No sir.
Okay, all in favor of approving the agenda, let me know, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. Okay. Public comments. Amanda Biddington. I hope I pronounced your name right.
That's okay. You did. It's fine. First of all, I want to thank you all for letting me be here. I want to thank these ladies for always taking requests by email. I am not here to rehash my situation whatsoever. I am here because I know that there is a new county engineer, and maybe possibly he has looked into the records out at the road department. And I didn't know if possibly he has looked into anything on County Road 161. I know he's very busy. I've heard information about different roads. But I'm just here to see if that road has been looked into. I could be one hundred percent wrong, but I'll always believe in my heart that that was a county road. So I guess I'm just here for a yes or no, and I'm okay with whatever I'm told, so.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have an objection to he's looking into this. I don't think he has. Has he looked into it?
I hadn't asked him to look into it, but I did find out something today I didn't know. That, and I've got to verify which houses, but there was mail delivered at Route Two Jimmison above that, what's that last road intersection where the fence starts?
One fifty.
Okay. The mail delivered up that road back in early eighties, and I'll find it if I need to, but that... The mail post office told me today, they do not deliver unless it's a public county road. They will not go up a private drive, or they will not go up a non-maintained road. So at some point, that was a county road, and if I will find the letters or whatever I can find, that's so addressed.
Which post office told you that, Mr. Williams?
Clinton Post Office told me they will not deliver.
And you're like telling me they got some mail carriers going on non-county maintained roads. I see them do it. Which I mean, it makes me no difference, but they do.
I know back in the day, the post people used to tell me that hey, they gotta deliver wherever your mailbox is, as long as they got a turnaround spot.
Mine delivers my house inside at that.
As Commissioner Hardy said, we'll get our new engineer to look into this and see what else we can dig up.
I appreciate it very much, and thank you all for taking your time to listen to me.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate it very much.
All right. Motion, we have a public hearing for alcohol license application of Sherland Jimmison LLC doing business as Sam Country Liquor located at forty-five ninety-one Alabama Highway one forty-five in Clinton.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Got a motion, Commissioner Parnell, second. Commissioner Bone. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no one to discuss, I'd make a motion that we close the public hearing and go back into our regularly scheduled meeting.
Got a motion, we close.
We got a vote to... We got a vote to open the hearing.
Oh, I apologize. I'm ahead of myself tonight.
Yeah, got a vote to open the public hearing. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Motion, Commissioner Parnell, second. Commissioner Bone to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So carried. Now, do we have anybody that make any comments on this?
Now, I'll make my motion that we close the public hearing and go back into our regularly scheduled meeting.
Second.
Got a motion, we close the public hearing with Commissioner Parnell, second, Commissioner Williams. Any discussion on this? All in favor of closing the public hearing, let me know, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? So carried.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask our first resolution to allow Sherland Jimmison LLC doing business as Sam's Country Liquor to continue their application process.
Second.
Got a motion, Commissioner Parnell, second, Commissioner Bone, for them to continue their application process. All in favor of this motion, let me know, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
No, Commissioner Hardy. Motion carried. Oh. I was reading it to be sure. Okay, we need a motion to open the public hearing for alcohol license application for Sherland Jimmison LLC doing business as Sam's County Mart located forty-five ninety-three Highway one forty-five, Clinton.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor of opening the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? So carried. Any comments? Need a motion to close the public hearing, but there's no comments.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, Commissioner Parnell, second, Commissioner Bone, to close the public hearing. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried.
I'd request our... I would make the resolution, sir, that we would allow them to move forward with their application process.
Second.
Got a motion, Commissioner Parnell, second, Commissioner Bone, for them to move forward with the process of their application. All in favor? Let me know, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Oppose.
Let the record show. Commissioner Hardy opposes. Motion carried. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make the motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion, Commissioner Bone, second. Commissioner Hardy? This includes the minutes of October eighth of two thousand twenty-four, claims list of October twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. Sheriff requesting approval of reclassification. Requesting approval for three percent cost of living salary for an employee. Commission office, resolution to open bank accounts for the Chilton County Animal Control. Resolution to transfer the remainder of the ARPA money, three hundred and twenty thousand, to the Animal Control Fund. Requesting approval of job description for the Chilton County Animal Control Director, Animal Control Tech One and Animal Control Tech Two. Requesting approval to advertise for Chilton County Animal Control Director. Requesting to accept the assets from the Humane Society. Requesting approval for the carryover of the two hundred and seventeen thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifteen cents for reappraisal. Requesting to authorize the chairman and vice chairman to complete the yearly evaluations for Manuka Park.
Which was changed to the commissioner assigned to that department.
I recommended that. Does the commission want to vote on that, or y'all okay with changing that to the commission assigned to the parks to do this evaluation?
I'm good. I'm good.
I'm good with leaving it with the department.
Leave it with the commissioner, then it's got those departments. Okay, that's the consent.
Mr. Williams?
That's the consent under that. Includes Carol Stallman to award a purchase order to Ephraim and Associates Environmental Consulting LLC of the nine-one-one for the...
Yes. I thought about that, and I discussed it earlier, Mr. Williams. I think that we already got a resolution that the chair and the vice chair approves the department heads, as you did with the...
Well, we couldn't find it.
Okay, because didn't you approve the direct, the engineer and the...
Yes. Prove the... Prove the... For the ones that we didn't, last week, we done awarded their raises.
Right, I understand.
But these wasn't included. Makes me no difference, however hell y'all want it.
I mean, I could be wrong. I thought we had said that the vice chair and the chair would do them approvals for the for the department heads.
The engineer and administrator.
Engineer administrator, okay.
I just...
Just want to make sure we...
That was engineer and administrator.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I'm good with it.
But, okay.
No, I'm good. I'm...
Okay.
Make sure we hadn't stumbled over ourselves here.
Okay, so back to consent agenda is nine-one-one, P-25 contract change order. Road Department, request approval of field positions. Derek Adams, Ross Devers, Cordell Baker, Devin Horner. Approve the budget amendment. Request approval for job descriptions on the pay plan, which is the assistant county engineer job description, assistant county engineer road department land development job description, engineer assistant job description, assistant master lead mechanic, assistant mechanic job description, shop foreman job description, administrative job description, and also approved to buy the two Ford F-150 pickups from...
Stire.
Stire?
Stiver.
Stiver. And what was the other?
To amend the minutes for the reclassification and wages.
Right, amend the minutes for the reclassification and wages. Was that all the additions we had now?
On the consent, yes.
On the consent. And Manuka, request approval of surplus of the following equipment. A two thousand four John Deere Trailbook ATV, two thousand four Honda Four Trax ATV, two thousand four John Deere forty-three ten tractor and loader. And approve the pay raise increase for Teddy Chambers and Gerald Erickson. That's the end of consent agenda. Any discussion, questions?
I'm... I'll be voting no because of the vast stance with the animal control head of the ambulance service.
Ambulance service is not even in the consent agenda.
I know. No. I voted against it last time because we didn't have an ambulance service.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Williams. I misunderstood you. Okay. All right, all in favor? Approving the consent agenda, let me know, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
I'm opposed.
Mr. Hedley and Mr. Williams opposed. Motion carried. That's the end of the consent agenda. Commission office.
I request a resolution to accept bids for bid two-five-zero-two-two for the twenty-four twenty-five three-quarter ton pickup truck. And those were the two listed, Donahoo and Carl Cannon.
Will we accept the bids? Second.
Got a motion, we accept, Commissioner Williams, second. Commissioner Hardy, any discussion? All in favor, let me know, saying aye.
Aye.
Motion, all... Any opposed? Motion carried.
I'd like to request a resolution to award that bid two-five-zero-two-two to Donahoo Chevrolet.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Got a motion, Commissioner Hardy, second. Commissioner Bones, any discussion? All in favor of awarding the bid, let me know, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Commissioner reports. Commissioner Bone?
No, sir.
Commissioner Hardy?
I only have one thing. I've been asked by the sheriff's department, the sheriff administrators and the sheriff that we reappoint Alan Kaiten to the merit board. His term is up. Per sheriff.
You didn't have the resolution?
Yes, resolution.
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion, Commissioner Hardy, and a second, Commissioner Bone, to reappoint Mr. Alan Kaiten to this, what was this?
Merit board.
Merit board.
Merit board. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner...
Well, I do. I got one more thing. Hold on a minute.
All right.
Just in case the people of Chilton County don't want me to serve here anymore, I want to tell you guys, I have enjoyed my time in eight years of being on this commission. I think that we have accomplished a lot here in the eight years that I've been here. So we get a milestone the other day with the new courthouse, tackling this animal control issue. We've paved over eighty miles of roads here. We've got... We've borrowed enough money to pave about sixty miles, it was a little over twenty million dollars, and we're probably around four million dollars that we left owed on that loan. And this county's not in debt, but we still got a long ways to go. Just want to let, just reiterate something I said when we first got here, eight years ago. The roads that you drive on are forty-five to fifty years old and has no resurfacing on majority of them, if they're not already dirt roads. I think this county's done well by doing that, not just the county commission, but the citizens that support this county locally. And just thank you for that, you know what I mean? Because, you know, it's a team effort. We all ain't gonna get along. I'm good with it. There's some things I may say and don't like, but I'm good with it. Thank God I don't have social media anymore, so I'm good with that, too. But just want to say how enjoyable it was to serve as the commission in this county and serve with you guys, all of you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardy. Oh, Commissioner Hedley?
I don't have anything.
Commissioner Mims not here. Commissioner Parnell?
Yes, sir, if you will allow me a few minutes.
Yes, sir.
Unlike the rest of these guys up here, I'm not running for office again, so this is definitely my last meeting. Eleven years ago, our friend Tim Mims from Mapleville passed away, and I was contacted by the governor's office and asked, would I consider taking an appointment to the county commission? At that point, I'd never considered serving in any capacity in the county. Very opinionated, very loud, always think I know the thing to do, even when I'm wrong, and a lot of us are that way. But I told the governor's office that I needed some time to think about it, to pray about it, and to talk to my family about it. Well, a week passed, and I got a call from the governor's chief of staff and was told, if you don't accept this right now, we're gonna appoint someone else. And this was on a Friday. And I said, give me the eight o'clock Monday morning, and I'll give you an answer. So I talked to my wife, and many of you know my wife. She's a quiet person that kind of minds her own business and stays to herself. She says, I think you're crazy. Why are you doing this to our family? And I said, well, I think I can make a difference in the county. So she said, well, I'll support you with whatever you do. And so I said, well, I'm gonna do it. So I called my brother, and I said, I'm gonna take this. And he says, are you sure you know what you're doing? And I said, why do you say that? And he said, if you accept this job at eight o'clock Monday morning, by noon on Monday, half the people in Chilton County will not like you anymore. And that has been the most profound thing that I've ever been told.
Amen.
Because no road matters unless it's your road, and no issue matters unless it's your issue. Over these eleven years, I've had an opportunity to serve with some outstanding people and some strong leaders. And you know, you get people that they get up and they start thanking folks for all the things, and they always inevitably leave someone out. So I'm gonna hit a few people tonight that have done things that impacted me personally. And everyone has, but in a way that I think made me a better commissioner. And several of you have probably heard me say this before, but at my first county commission meeting, Heady Hayes, who was a Democrat, and me, who was far-right Republican, we knew we weren't gonna agree on very many things, had a conversation, where Heady Hayes told me, what happens in that commission chamber needs to stay in that commission chamber. And I said, what do you mean, Mr. Heady? He says, I mean, don't make it personal. When you leave out that door, you still be friends with the people you serve with. Never let anything that you do, this county business, affect who you are as a person or your friendship with the people you serve with. That was profound, and I've thought about that more and more as I've served. Second, I would be remiss if I didn't mention Shannon Welch. Shannon Welch was a serving commissioner at the time. And Shannon gave me an adage that I later found, came from Eddie Reed, but it was very important. And I don't think I understood it the first time or the second time that he said it. But he said, get your four and govern. He didn't mean run over everybody. He meant that it takes four people to get anything done, and you've gotta build a consensus. And if you can't get three other people to go with you, what good are you? You're not gonna accomplish anything. So build a consensus and govern. I think that was one of the most important things that I was told as a commissioner. And then going down the list, Steve Langston, who we served with on the last commission. Steve personifies leadership, if you've ever been around him. Military guy, smart, quiet, never wants any of the spotlight at all. Great guy. But Steve impressed upon me the decorum of the office. Now, I had served longer than Steve did, but I didn't think that being a county commissioner was an exalted position or a respected position. And I don't think very many of us think that it is. It's not like you're a member of the state legislature or a governor or something like that. You're nobody from a little town or a little community in Chilton County, Alabama. But understanding the decorum of this office, that you were elected by the people to serve the people, and how you represent yourself while you're doing it, down to, that's why we have a dress code today. Steve said, we need to act the part all the time when we're serving the people of Chilton County. That struck an accord with me. Wearing a suit doesn't make me better than anyone else. Wearing a suit is like when you wear a suit to church on Sunday. It's showing your respect to God, and we're showing our respect to the people who elected us when we come here and represent themselves by dignifying them, ourselves, with wearing a suit as a sign of respect. So I thought that was huge. And then, you know, the list is long, but two more people. One is Joe Hedley. Joe is quiet. I'm gonna try not to get emotional. He's considerate, and he's kind. Doesn't always have a lot to say, but when he says something, it's profound. Apologize, I'm a very emotional person. And then lastly, if you've ever had, if you've never had an accountability partner, I'm gonna introduce you to my friend Jimmy Hardy, because you need him. Jimmy Hardy has called me after every meeting I believe that we've ever had. He's told me the things I've done right and the things I've done wrong, and he doesn't hold back.
That's right.
And that makes you be a better person at anything you do when you have an accountability partner.
That's a two-way street, by the way, too.
Thank you. Sorry about getting emotional, but this is something I've enjoyed, and I thoroughly enjoyed serving the people of Chilton County. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Parnell. I'll add a little bit to that before I allow Mr. Williams to speak about what you said about Mr. Hardy telling you what you did wrong and what you did right. I know a lot of you here know a man that was a dear friend of mine that set some good examples for me, Mr. Gilbert Green. Mr. Gilbert Green told me one time, a true friend will tell you what you need to hear, not what you want to hear. Commissioner Williams?
Tell us what we need to hear.
That's a pretty good way to lead into that. I think he's trying to throw me off. The first thing I'm gonna start with, trade school tax. Commissioner Hedley asked a question a couple meetings ago when we were talking about the split on the money for the trade school. And he wanted to know why all of a sudden people were talking about the trade school tax and the split. Well, something that was said, what was it, about a year ago, I think, when we passed that resolution, sent it to Montgomery for renewal of it. That night, Pam Price and I committed the whole public meetings in order to hear from the people, answering any questions regarding the allocations of funds received from the trade school tax. And Mr. Kelly attended two of them. Several, a couple of board members and oncoming board members attended a couple. And a couple of prospective commissioners attended. And there was a lot of questions asked. So if you want to point a finger anywhere, why people's asking about it, you can point it down this end of the table. Well, I never have a problem answering a question if it's asked of me. And if I'm get it wrong, I'll do my best to get it right. And the question was asked. I don't know why it's any confusion that we've never voted to change the split. The split will be fifty-fifty if it passes November the fifth, and make that clear. I don't know why people's confused on the split, but I've got several questions to me that ask if we changed it. So nothing's changed. The other thing is, that's all I got to say on that. I think it was two meetings ago that we voted to nominate and vote on three members for the subdivision committee that Mr. Parnell was referencing earlier. And we didn't, we discussed it slightly at the last meeting, and I think if we're gonna do this committee, then we need to go on and appoint them, nominate them, and let them go about doing whatever they're gonna do for this commission. So I move, we open up nominations for the three positions for the subdivision committee.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion to open up nominations for three more members of subdivision committee. Second, Commissioner, motion, Mr. Williams, second, Commissioner Parnell. Any discussions?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'd like to say a little something. I really, which, you know, I'm good with doing this, but you know, I really feel like, as close as we are to an election, we should wait and let some of these new guys that's coming in, they may have some, you know, some input. Maybe somebody that they want to put on this board or whatever. You know, I just, because this thing could change drastic.
Well, it's been a month.
If it does, we're gonna be appointing people, maybe that they don't want to, they want to appoint somebody else, you know?
Well, if we're gonna do that, are we gonna replace this scratch and start all over with a new group? Are we gonna... I mean, you're talking about possibility of a whole new, majority of new commissioner, new commission period, so... And it's like I said, it's been four weeks since we talked about doing that, and we didn't make any recommendations last week. So, Lord.
I was just, I was just following, I might want you back to go and do whatever you feel free to do, you know? I was just, we was just in a discussion. There's been a motion and a second to do it. I just, you know, that's just, that's where my feelings would be to... I really don't like reacting to anything the last two or three weeks when the, before the elections, where new people's gonna come on that might have better and fresher ideals than some of the ones that left, you know?
Joe, I would just comment that under our current meeting rules, that if we open nominations, they would stay open for three meetings. Joe, I would, I would just comment that under our current meeting rules, that if we open nominations, they would stay open for three meetings. So if, if we open them tonight, um.
The new commission would be.
The new commission would have two meetings where they would have an opportunity.
That'd be only be for a board, wouldn't it?
Um, well, I mean.
I mean, does it committee too?
Is it? 'Cause I, I don't know that we designated it.
I don't remember seeing that in our rules on the committee.
I don't know that it was designated, but.
I mean, it doesn't matter to me, we can leave them open three weeks, that's fine, uh.
If you're doing a resolution.
If we did that, it would allow them to have an opportunity to not only nominate members, but to vote on who those people are.
You want me to include that in my motion?
Yes, sir.
I include that in my motion.
I will sa- I will, uh, change my second to, to my second.
Okay, we have a motion that we open the nominations for the subdivision committee for three meetings, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Mr. Williams, and a second, Commissioner Parnell. Any more discussion? All in favor of opening this, uh, nominations for, for three meetings, there'll be no saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, so carried.
You gonna answer nominations?
Yeah, nominations are open right now.
Uh, I nominate Jeff Carroll. Jeff Carroll's been before this commission enough, he's asked enough questions, he ought to be one of the most knowledgeable ones about this whole subdivision thing. And he's been on one side, now he be on the other side.
Alright, I'll nominate Denny Carroll. Denny Carroll runs Russell Building Supply.
I'll nominate Sue Hope.
Sue's already.
Sue's already on it? Oh, okay, I thought we was doing it again, I didn't know.
No, we, we're gonna add three, you can have as many nominations as you want.
We, we've went over, okay, I'm sorry, well, well, maybe she's got a sister named Sue or something.
I nominate Jason Clayke.
You only allow one nomination? No, I'm just kidding. I'll nominate Jason Clayke. You're, that's right, yes, sir, yes, sir, amen.
Okay, that's, we have three nominations tonight, so we've got two more, two more meetings for, for nominations. Okay, y'all got that? Thank you. Okay.
Last meeting, uh, we voted to accept an approved committee based on, I'm gonna call it less than accurate information. For the hospital, for the ambulance exploratory committee. Uh, the suggestion that was made on the night of the meeting. That RPS was there, and he didn't have any names, he didn't have any specific positions, just five organizations. Those organizations he suggested should have someone on this committee was Chilton County Firefighters Association. An appointee by the county commission. A recommendation from the hospital. A appointee from BRMS. And an appointee from the Ambulance Association of Alabama. And we, I move that we rescind the motion that set up this exploratory committee at our last meeting.
Got a motion that we rescind this, have a second? Motion fails on the floor.
Okay, so we're gonna totally ignore the wishes of the County Firefighters Association?
No, sir.
Well, apparently we are. This is not the name that's on that list, it's not the name that they requ- requested.
They have been asked to give us a recommendation, and they have not given us one yet.
When did you ask them? I asked them, I asked them six weeks ago.
I asked them two weeks ago. Have they given you a recommendation?
I told you who it was at the last meeting, Jonathan Payne, South Chilton Fire Department.
Well, the president of Fire Association says that they didn't, two weeks ago after this meeting, when he called me that night, said he did not have a recommendation that he would get one.
Mr. Williams, could I interrupt? Yeah, I know it's your floor. So, wha- what, what instead, instead of rescinding the motion, what if you offered a motion to add this person to the committee?
That's mad and eight. He did, he said five, and five.
They're not voting, so we don't need an, an odd number, you're right.
Now, I think we've already voted on this, not, on this, uh.
We've already.
Yeah, you already voted on this.
And we already discussed, and, uh, it shouldn't even be discussed anymore.
That's right, we need to move forward.
Okay, um.
But you could re, if you wanna redo your resolution, Mr. Williams, we could add that.
Not tonight.
Okay.
I won't do that tonight. Uh, I had asked Heath some questions, uh, County Road four ninety-six. We had a new covert installed there on, or about June twenty-fifth. Uh, Heath, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask you these questions, and you explain them to the commission. If you'd come up, please?
Before we go any further, I know this is your question, but he's aware of these questions, you're gonna ask him, and you've talked to him about this.
Um, we've talked about this quite a few times.
Alright.
Uh, was installation of this covert on the schedule prior to June twentieth?
Um, basically, the County Road four ninety-six is a dirt road, um, on this road, like all of our other roads, drainage is the most important thing about keeping a road dry, keeping the ditches open.
If I'd, Matt, if I will, just, was it on the schedule?
Um, well, I guess to get to that point, um, this property, um, Commissioner Randall Kelly, Commissioner, the chairman, has property on both sides. And, um, he had a turnout, and he had a drainage issues. And, uh, he called to see if we could improve the drainage. Um, so that's when it was inspected, um, once it's inspected, um, contacted Commissioner Kelly, told him the options. And one of the options was to, um, install a new cross drain, to take water from, from one side of the road to the other. We asked him if it would be okay with him, since, um, that's what happens if you take water from one side to the other, you have to give permission from the property owner. And of course, in this case, Commissioner Kelly was the property owner, and he gave us approval to do that.
I know you had a question you've asked me. Uh, I, you've told me a couple of times, the thing that you use to guide you in, when you go look at a private piece of property, is, and I'm gonna try to quote you correctly, was the request of the landowner for the benefit of the county. Was this installation in the benefit of the county?
Well, uh, like I said, drainage is always the most important thing, so one way or another, we have to drain. And when we do, um, look to do the drainage, we work with the adjacent landowners, of course, we try to not negatively impact them. Um, options, we could've had a turnout pipe, but we could've also taken the ru- the water from the other side of the road, to the other side of the road. And, uh, I talked with Commissioner Kelly, he was good with taking the water to the other side of the road. And we, we do that, um, all across the county. I know, in this situation, you're right, involved a commissioner's property, uh, but this was no different than any other, uh, citizen. We always, um, you know, and that's the con- conversation we had, is, is, as the road department, our number one goal is to improve the roads as best as possible. But the second thing is, we're also looking to improve, improve, uh, adjacent property landowners', uh, land, we don't, well, at their request. Uh, if their property's getting flooded out, we try to divert that water in a different direction, if possible, along the right of way. And that may be what we talked about, um, the county doesn't have a policy when it comes to, to, um, to doing, to doing that. So we normally do that at, um, at our cost, if we can do it on the right of way.
What was the reason for that being moved? Was there any other reason outside of that? Moving that water from that side, one side of the road to the other, and putting it in a pipe six feet away to go back onto the road?
Well, as I mentioned, um, coming down the hill, there could've been a large turnout pipe to go underneath the driveway, or it could've been taken to the other side of the road. Um, there's also, uh, right there, it's close to, I think it would've had some erosion issues, my assistant, Matt Epperson, took a look at it. And, um, uh, Commissioner Kelly had mentioned that, uh, the best, that, that obviously getting a turnout pipe would've been super expensive on his part. And he wasn't planning on putting one in, and had that happened, water would've rushed and continued to erode into his, his field. And while that, I understand where you're coming from, we have that all the time, we do not have a policy that requires for turnout, culverts. You can see that along all of our miles of road, we have lots of, um, dry turnouts.
So the option on this was either the pipe across the road, or him to put in a covert under the driveway?
That is correct.
Okay, so, we spent county time, county money, so he wouldn't have to put in a driveway covert.
Well, I, I, I'm trying to interrate right here, I've listened to this just for a little bit, and I'm gonna interrate this, okay? And respectfully, gonna interrate this. He's the engineer.
And I think this is my time on this meeting.
And I have a, also.
No, no, you don't.
Okay. And then we'll go right here.
If you have anything else to say about that?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, do you wanna do something about this, or you want me to? I'm telling you.
Well, what, what I would say is, is, is this was not special treatment for the commissioner. This has happened, this happens before I came, and numerous times, that, that, uh, like I said, we've worked with, if possible, we've worked with all landowners to divert pro- to divert water, if possible. If we have approval of adjacent landowners, um.
So you're saying he had, he had trouble with water coming down that way, and water needed to be diverted?
That is correct.
Okay.
And in the end, it provides, it continues to provide good drainage for our roads.
Now, Mr. Chairman, may I address this?
I'm finished.
Yes, sir, he's finished.
I'm not saying that whatever you got going, Mr. Kelly, is whatever you're trying to prove here, what I proved wrong, right? But putting our engineer on the spot, and putting him on, and, and, and dissecting him in front of this public in this county. Uh, to prove whatever you're trying to prove, I think is out of line, first of all.
I didn't, Heath, you everything I was talking about, we talked about this for three months.
I had the, I had the floor, remember?
Yeah, you're right.
But I think it's out of line, number one, I, I, if you have a point, so be it, you know, you, you see what I'm saying? Uh, the, the, Mr. Williams, if you wanna talk about commissioners getting the roads fixed and stuff, pipe, was your pipe on the, did we put on your property over there?
Nope, I put it in myself.
Was it on, what, did you tear it out also?
Did I tear it out?
Yeah, the, the county, but where we done, the county work on your road where you built your shop? Was that approved, was that on the agenda?
I put everything in myself.
We didn't do no work on that road at all?
You did work on the road, you scraped it like you scraped other dirt roads.
And where there's a pipe, it was taken out too, is, is that correct?
Hmm, pipe was took out by accident.
Like I mentioned, we've done this numerous times.
The pipe was taken out by accident?
Yeah, across the road from me.
We diverted the water on that, so, right, we diverted water on that road too.
No, he diverted the water because the water was washing out the middle of that curve on that road, it had nothing to do with my property.
I'm just asking, I'm just asking.
Water's coming down in front of the house next to me.
Okay, guys, I think it's enough of this stuff. Our engineer makes the decisions on where there needs to be a pipe, and where there don't need to be a pipe. There's not a person in here, I don't care if it's a commissioner or who else, would've kept letting water wash a ditch three or four foot deep down their property when it's coming off county property. It's county's responsibility to fix it, I don't care whose it is. And Mr. Williams, I got one question to ask you. You come over and took pictures of that county equipment, and passed them around to people in the county, and told them they've done their fixing my driveway.
No, it's not what I said.
Yes, sir, you sure did.
No, it's not what I said.
Yes, sir, you sure did.
Did you hear me say that?
I got proof that you said it, and I got the pictures. Let's move on, you got anything else?
No, I'm done.
Okay.
Mr. Hedley, Mr. Hedley has.
I'm, I'm, they, they, they addressed where I was going to.
Okay, I'm asking for a resolution to remove the stop sign off of County Road ninety-seven, where the intersection's four seventy-eight, and put it on four seventy-eight.
I move.
We move stop sign off of four seventy-eight, I mean, off of ninety-seven, put it on four seventy-eight.
Second.
Got a motion, Commissioner Williams, second, Commissioner Bone.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
I'm not a police officer or a road engineer, and I'm not familiar with this intersection. But the thought of moving a stop sign from one road to the other terrifies me. Because you're gonna have people that drive that road daily, that are not gonna be aware that that stop sign has been moved. And they're gonna come through their normal speed, thinking they have a right of way, and somebody's gonna pull out in front of them who has the right of way.
Why don't I just add, can I, can I say something? Why don't I just add another stop sign, just put it up? Can you do that?
Well, both stop signs.
Why don't, why don't we just, uh.
One reason.
Ask the engineer what we need to.
Well, I, I agree with that, Commissioner Bone, but when you pull up to ninety-seven and stop, you cannot see down through seventy-eight.
No, you can't.
You gotta pull out in the road.
You're gonna still make, you're still gonna make both roads stop, okay?
I don't have no problem with that.
Stop sign there, and just add another stop sign.
Well, you're doing the same thing, uh, Commissioner Bone, 'cause they're not, if you put a stop sign there, it's no different. If you got two of them there, if you got the one, because four seventy-eight don't think they got stop sign. We might put one of the lighted signs there, you know, keep attention on it all the time, four seventy-eight.
I never know four seventy-eight, I mean, ninety-seven to have a stop sign on it, and I ain't been here for twenty, thirty years.
You had just got one on it now.
Ninety-seven?
There, where it runs into four seventy-eight?
I mean, not to have one, I mean, I, I, I come up there, um, many times, and I stop at ninety-seven all the time and look back to the right. But you're saying there's a blind spot right there.
Yeah, you can't see, 'cause it comes up the angle, and four seventy-eight comes in this way, and there's some stuff.
Make both of them stop, and you ain't gotta worry about them running.
Let me ask, let's ask our engineer his opinion. Heath, what, what's your opinion? You went out and looked at that, what's your opinion on this?
Well, I think, uh, what Mr. Parnell said is, is, is recommended, you definitely usually put signs out a week or two in advance to let people know that the stop sign's coming. Sometimes the sign's put out and it's covered, and people see that, and they realize that something's going on. Uh, we talked about getting message boards, um, and, um, of course, we can always try the, uh, uh, off, the, at putting up another stop sign. Or even making a three-way stop. But, uh, sounds like, uh, majority of people here have had issues, so, uh. How much, how much of those lighted signs, lighted stop signs?
They're pretty expensive, and have a lot of trouble with them.
Well, the, the lighted stop signs are fifteen hundred a piece, and, and we do have times, people hit them with baseball bats.
They're stealing batteries out of them.
Some batteries.
Well, just put a stop, you can put a big old stop sign on two posts.
What, do a stop sign ahead, uh, stop ahead sign?
Yeah, yeah, stop us. Again, we're dealing with, with people, people, people problem here, how he, you know?
Okay, are we clear on what we're gonna do now? You can put a stop sign at both roads.
Is that what the resolution's been changed?
I would make a resolution to put a stop sign on both, on four seventy-eight and ninety-seven, and increase the, 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 the size of the, the one on ninety-seven.
Did I get a second to my motion?
Yes.
Did you have a motion?
I thought I did, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, second to your motion?
Yeah, we had a second.
Well, we had a second.
Were we changing it?
Change the motion.
Two, two signs, two stop signs, one on four seventy-eight, and one at ninety-seven at that intersection on the northbound side of ninety-seven.
So. We gotta.
It'd be northbound, Clippers to Providence, going north.
That's not east.
Huh.
Yeah, that's right, okay. You good with that?
So we gotta. We got a motion, what's your, what's your thought?
And a second, to put a stop sign at both, both roads.
The only question, we do, you don't wanna get a three-way stop, the one coming off of, uh, twenty-eight?
There shouldn't be a reason for that bit when you come in, 'cause you can bear to the right, and you're, you're, and you're going straight ahead.
Alright.
Should be three, I mean, I'm asking, no, don't listen, I'm not the engineer, you the engineer.
Well, we do, there's roads like that, yes, um, but, uh.
Well, if that's what you recommend, put three, what, put four if that's what you want.
Well, how about, how about we approve it? Approve either two or three pending, uh, engineers review.
There you go.
Okay, I'll change my motion to that.
All in favor? Uh, all opposed, motion carried.
I'm making a motion.
Move adjourned.
Hold, hold, hold a minute, I ain't asked for that.
I, I got one other point here, uh, now that Heath's here. The gentleman that was here earlier about the, the same situation where you don't have any sight of view.
Uh, exactly.
Can we put a stop sign there, Heath?
Hit that one time.
The gentleman that was here for the.
Fifty-nine, fifty-nine and four seventy-eight.
Fifty-nine and four, oh, five forty-two.
It would be almost an identical situation, could we add a s- the, uh, make that a three stop, a three-way stop?
We, I would need six-two, like, just said, because of the size.
Would it be different? Would it be different?
You would, you need to make it a three-way stop as well and, um, and, and, uh, we can do that. Um, I would say, uh, as Matt Epperson, the assistant, said, the, uh, the best method would be cut the bank back. And of course, it sounds like Matt's had a tough time getting the, the landowner, but we, we can approve, uh, the three-way stop.
Won't you just go out there and look at and make a recommendation for us?
I've, I've, I've seen it, I've seen it, it's just not much traffic on the road that, um,
I don't think the stop sign is gonna stop, I changed
There's a lot more traffic on fifty-nine than there is on that one.
And that's a curve, in a curve, you gonna put a stop sign in a curve.
And so you, you could actually cause more accidents.
Yeah.
On a, on stopping a high volume road like that.
That's my question, you answer.
Oh, yeah. Now we need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Oh, 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 hold on a minute.
Y'all killing me.
Oh, I was gonna ask about the, uh, That was requesting the, um, to use the county property as a staging area? Do we want to talk about making a, uh, uh, give an approval for them to use it pending the county attorney's review and approval of the, the license?
At one amount.
And add a charge or no charge?
I make a motion that we approve it At the recommendation of the, uh, engineer and the approval of the attorney at no charge.
Second.
Got a motion, Commissioner Parnell, second, Commissioner Hedley, for these to, to use this place. At no charge by approval of the engineer and the attorney. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried.
We adjourn.
Now we move, we adjourn. Got a second, anybody second, we adjourn?
Second.